The revised ordinance of the city of Adra to approve expending of funds in any future grant amendments as it relates to an anticipated FY twenty one nine eleven training grant from EOPSS, State nine one one department, in the amount of approximately two hundred and thirty thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and sixty cents. There is no match required.
Second.
For those of you at home or fellow counselors, we've been very fortunate to get this grant on an ongoing basis. This is for the required training of our dispatchers. It's the police department. They're required to attend, I think it's sixteen hours of in-service every year. And this can be used to pay for their training and also any expenses that come along. I believe even the overtime that it might take to replace them. So it's a great grant. It's two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We're very fortunate to get it. Any comments or questions? And any of my counselors, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to, over the next week, get any answers for you if you do.
No questions. We get this every year. It's, we're incredibly fortunate, like you said.
Incredibly fortunate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of October twentieth, twenty twenty, I entertain a motion to transfer three thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty cents from account one one two four one zero 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 dash five seven eight three zero zero, Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account one three zero zero one zero 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 dash five one 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 zero, School Crossing God Salaries per executed memorandum of agreement with the Adra Crossing God Association.
Second.
They entered into a contract that's good through twenty oh four, twenty twenty-four. And this involves the increase in the minimum wage in any contract negotiations they had with the city. Any comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Excuse me. I entertain a motion of October twentieth, twenty twenty, uh, from the docket of October twenty twenty. I entertain a motion to transfer three thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty cents from account one one two four one zero 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 dash five is seven eight.
I think that's the one we just did.
Yeah, you just did that one.
Oh, that's right. I, I thank you very much.
Of course.
From the docket of October twenty twenty twenty, I entertain a motion to pray a fire department FY twenty twenty invoice to Redline for fifteen hundred dollars, a vote authorizing payment that is needed to satisfy this debt.
Second.
Uh, this was part of Redline come in and sanitized all four fire stations. And the bill is fifteen hundred dollars. They gave a five hundred dollar discount. And this is gonna be paid for by by the Last Call Foundation, it's a nonprofit organization, provided, established to provide training, education, and funding to fire, to fire departments to enhance firefighter safety. Till we pay the bill, we can't get, they, once we pay the bill, they will reimburse us. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I have no other business this evening. Move to adjourn at seven oh four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to call Transportation and Traffic Committee to, at seven oh five, seven oh six. Counselor Conti and Counselor Reynolds, thank you for joining me in this meeting. I have two items of business and just a couple of general comments, if I may. The Traffic Study Commission resumed its meetings, as you know. We were in person here at City Hall, but we're going to be going remote. So our next meeting will be October.
Sorry, I missed that. Could you say it again?
Will be October nineteenth at six o'clock on, via Zoom. Counselor Reynolds, on your, the issue of the Scott Street parking, I want to let you know that the discussion on that topic will be resumed at the meeting on the nineteenth, and I apologize for the delay on that issue. Yeah. And I think that's all for the updates. And I have two items of business for this evening, if I may. From the docket of October twentieth, twenty twenty, I entertain a motion to improve, approve the installation of an isolated stop sign for southbound drivers on Loomis Street at Como Drive. And that section of ten dash four point one one of the revised ordinances be amended accordingly.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Conti. I don't know if you're familiar with this particular intersection, but it's such that where Loomis meets Como, it's not at, if you will, a ninety-degree angle. Therefore, visibility is somewhat diminished. So someone put forward, I'm not quite sure where this business originated from, but the Traffic Study Commission considered this request and approved it. So we'd like to move ahead and put a stop sign there. Any questions or comments from anybody? No? All of the favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Counselor Reynolds?
Counselor Reynolds muted.
Aye.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Um, okay. From the docket of October twenty twenty twenty, I entertain a motion to appropriate one hundred and three thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and nine cents from account one zero 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 dash three five nine zero zero zero, Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash General Government to the following, forty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-five cents to account one four two zero one zero 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 five eight five zero eight two, Public Works Crosswalk System, sixty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-four cents to account one four two zero one zero 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 dash five eight five zero eight three, Public Works Radar Sign System.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Conti. You recall this came down just in the last week's communication from the mayor. It was preceded by an email from the mayor on the fifth containing information and a quote on these items. I don't know if you have that material in front of you, but basically what he, what this money would do, it would purchase ten of the radar, let me just get this right. It would purchase ten of the lighted crosswalks at a price of about twenty-two hundred dollars each and sixteen of the speed radar signs at a price of approximately thirty-one hundred fifty dollars each, with some other materials and equipment needed, thus we get to the hundred and three thousand. You both have been doing this longer than I have. I'm sure you're very familiar with the number of traffic issues and complaints and concerns around the city. However, in my brief experience, I think that this would be money well spent. These issues continue to, to come in on a regular basis. And I know that the mayor said he had spoken to the police chief and the DPW superintendent, and they've been discussing these issues for a while, and that they researched the pricing for months, according to his email. So in my opinion, it's money well spent. And if that hundred thousand dollars makes thousands of residents safer every day, then I think it's a fantastic return. So I'm ready to move on this tonight, but I'm interested in any questions or concerns. Yes, Counselor Blair?
Um, I had a chance to talk to Chief Hegney this week and the mayor. He stopped by when Kyle and I were having a discussion. This was one of the things that come up. And Kyle's, Kyle's in favor of this because without a Traffic Enforcement Division, you know, and especially during COVID, to have officers get out of their car and interact with somebody that won't wear a mask. He feels it's a move in the right direction. And as I said last week, we've had a traffic problem or a complaint since I've been on this council in twenty-one years. So I believe it's a step forward. If anybody thought I didn't think that way, I just, last week, I didn't feel it was an emergency. And the mayor sort of apologized to send it down that way.
Interesting. Thank you, Counselor.
I'm in favor of it.
Thank you very much, and thank you for, for giving, giving us that information. Counselor Conti, Counselor Reynolds, any comments, questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, I said last week that I fully support this. I see it as the first step towards a traffic control unit. This, um, in my mind, these items are as essential to the police department as exhaust fans out of fire department. This is, this is basic, essential management gear to be able to manage many of the problems that we have in the city. It's not quite as serious as a fire, but one injury on a crosswalk and suddenly it's very serious. So I can't support this enough, Counselor. I wish this happened ten years ago, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Counselor Conti. I agree. Counselor Reynolds? Questions? No? I'll say. All those in favor? I'm sorry, Counselor Reynolds.
I'm sorry. I just want to say that my, my only comment would be that if Chief Hegney believes that they need it, he's the person that's in charge of the streets as far as the safety of the streets, then I have absolutely no comments negative towards it at all.
Thank you, Counselor Reynolds. Counselor Waterman?
Yes, I, I think this is a, a great thing to do. I particularly like the lighted crosswalks because so many of our crosswalks really aren't visible when cars are moving thirty to forty miles an hour. And the, the lighted piece of it is going to make it quite visible, I presume. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Waterman. Anybody else? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes. Good. I'm glad to move that along. That's all the business I have for this evening. I would move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
Aye. Capital Improvement and Serious Development Committee has no business to bring before the committee members this evening. Therefore, we'll cancel our meeting tonight. But the Traffic and, I mean, the Rules and Procedures Committee does wish to have a meeting this evening. We can delay that to the end if you wish.
Counselor Conti?
Yes.
I don't think it was posted. You know, when we get our package.
It was posted because I got the NCR certificate. What happened was that I failed to inform James Jones that we needed to have it broadcast. Therefore, the Zoom meeting never took place on October eighth. But I can show you.
No, I mean, evenings, I'm sorry.
There's the notice of meeting right there.
For today?
No.
Okay. Cause I, I just didn't have anything in this packet. I was just concerned about that.
So Counselor, you did receive the draft version dated September twentieth?
Yes.
Good. Good. Because the Rules and Procedures Committee, when we meet, will want to hear your opinions about what's been included in that draft. Should I go now?
If you want to. I guess, I just want to be clear. The meeting, you have something in your hand that says we, you can have a meeting this evening, that it's posted for this evening, a committee meeting?
For previous meeting.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I just, I think it's a little confusing.
Guess we don't have a meeting tonight.
Yes, cause I don't, I didn't see it in this, just because I couldn't see, I don't have the posting itself up on the wall where we usually see it in the council office.
And I didn't, and I didn't get a agenda.
Right. Exactly. That's why I noticed that. So I just wanted to be clear on that, sir.
So, so to be safe, Counselor Jackson, we, we will not have a Rules and Procedures meeting tonight.
Okay.
But we will have one in two weeks.
Yay. Thank you. Counselor Waterman, it's your turn.
Yes, I call the Personnel, Veterans, and Human Services Committee to order at seven fifteen. And we have a guest tonight. And before I make any motions, I would like to introduce our guest is Ben Quell on Zoom. He's coming to visit us tonight and to speak to us.
Looks like he was sitting in.
Stan?
Okay.
Introduce him, Ty.
Ben Quell is the Director of Veteran Services in our city. He started work a week ago, and he was due to come on at seven and be, be there when we got to him. So I wonder if, is Jim, is?
You're rough.
Ben's there.
Can you hear Ty?
He's here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I am on.
I don't see him. That's why I'm asking.
Okay. Can you hear me, Ty?
Yes. Now I also see you. Thank you. Can everybody else see Ben?
Yes.
Hopefully, they can. So Ben, as our new director, I want to welcome you aboard. Well, and you're here on a temporary ninety-day appointment by the mayor. And I wondered if you could share with us some of your background and what you're, how you're interested in the kind of issues that are important to you as, as the Director of the Veterans Department?
Yes, hi. Good evening, members of the council. Ben Quell, newly appointed Director of Veteran Services. My background is I, I was primarily born and raised on Cape Cod. I'm the son of a police officer and a school teacher. I was recruited initially to college to play hockey, and then I actually grew some brain cells and decided that I would probably do better by joining ROTC and sticking harder to the books. After my initial experience in college, I graduated in nineteen ninety-five, received my commission in the regular army, and I did four years active duty at Fort Drum as an artillery officer. Later, I got out of the army, got married, started a family. And then in two thousand four, I got a Western Union telegram, and the mail welcomed me back into military service. So after that, thirty days later, I was in Baghdad. I did a eighteen-month tour there, training the newer Iraqi military and taking them on patrols. Once I got home, I went back to work. I attended graduate school on the post-nine eleven GI Bill. I studied public administration. The reason I did that, I was inspired by my time as a member of the Board of Selectmen in my hometown of Middleborough, and I decided that I wanted to enter, take a big leap and move from the private sector to the public sector. And I was advised to, you know, go back to school, get your degree. While I was in graduate school, I did a lot of work with veteran organizations. I volunteered doing statistical work to homeless shelters and what have you. And I really got a bug for, not just the municipal side of things, but particularly helping out veterans, which I felt was a, a growing concern in our society. Not only do we continue to help service the baby boomers and the Vietnam-era individuals who are continuously struggling with the illnesses that they have brought home from their time in Vietnam, but now we have this massive new population of veterans who are suffering from all kinds of things, especially emotional things like PTSD. So when I, once I graduated from, with, with my graduate degree in public administration, I immediately started applying for VSO jobs around the Commonwealth. And I was able to get hired by the town of Hanover as their Veteran Service Officer, and I did that for over two years. And sort of as incrementalism goes, I wanted to smart, start in a smaller community where I could learn the job, get my feet wet, wet in a, in a smaller sort of population of, of people and veterans. And after two years, I decided that I had the skill sets to take it to the next level and enter into a larger operation. And that's why I applied for the position in Attleboro, because I knew that it would be more responsibility, but I was ready for it. And I'm just really excited to be in Attleboro. I think it's the exact pick for what I was looking for, just a, a larger community. It's very similar to the one I live in, live in, here in Middleborough. I look at Attleboro, I sort of look at Middleborough as a sort of a baby Attleboro. And it's just, you know, packed full of, of great people, but it's particularly, it's packed full of veterans that I know I can help. And my first week was really just getting caught up. I had to, basically, it caught up on a month worth of everything from emails to applications for compensation and non-service connected pensions. Here I am, and we had a holiday yesterday. So here it is, Tuesday, I have finally gotten caught up with all my Chapter one fifteen and compensation applications that were sort of backlog. I've returned all my voicemails and messages. And come tomorrow, I'm ready just to start tackling new ground. I'll entertain any questions by the council?
Yes. Would anybody like to ask any questions?
And we're just glad to have you here.
Sure. I've been, I've been very well received by all the employees in the town hall. I've been introduced to every single one of them. I'm very impressed with your last Veterans Director, Ken. He, he left an office that was very organized, made it really easy for me to come in and just pick up and, and, and pick up the ball and run with it. So a big kudos to Ken and the job that he did for the, for the city. I have a wonderful assistant in my office, Stacy Santo. She's just one hundred percent positive, and I have, I've already really kind of bonded with her and just had a great time already, and she's helped me out a great deal.
Hi, Counselor Cobus had his hand up.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. Yes, Counselor Cobus.
Hey, thank you, Ty. Ben, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead, Counsel.
Excellent. Just as an artillery officer, I just wanted to double check.
Yeah. Actually, I, I wore my earplugs all the time.
All right. So first and foremost, welcome to the city. You certainly have some big shoes to fill with Ken. Ken did a, a great job, but I'm excited to see what, what you could do, what you can bring to the table. And it's great to have you and welcome. The one question I have is, and I know it's early, but have you, have you seen anything in particular in Attleboro with Attleboro veterans that, that you want to address particularly? Or it, it's still a little early, so if you don't have an answer now, that's, that's okay.
Well, you know, I've often asked myself, are there under-reported veterans? And typically, yes, there are. And this goes all the way back to when I was in graduate school consolidating a lot of this data. I know that female veterans typically under-report themselves. Even though they have honorable service, they, for some reason, don't check the block on census to say that I'm a veteran. So I always like to try to improve on that. Also, there are people who don't check themselves off on census as veterans because they feel like in order to be a veteran, you had to be deployed to a combat zone. That's not correct at all. So most likely, you have, you know, at least slightly more veterans than you think you do. As far as getting to those veterans, you know, there really is no, whether they're baby boomers or I don't know what the new terminology is, generation this way or whatever, everybody is using the internet. Everybody's using Facebook. And I think that one thing I'd like to do is to use, to bring some of the tools to the city that I was using in the town of Hanover. For instance, I did maintain a very professional Facebook with the town. It was strictly for informational uses. There was no messaging going on there, and I, and I was able to post things either directly from the VA or from the Department of Veteran Services, the Commonwealth, that would get out to the community with the understanding that that would be received either by veterans or people, family and friends who know veterans. What I also did is I did a lot of videos of myself. I usually would try to keep them to about fifteen to twenty minutes. And I would take these videos and I would work with a media director in Hanover, and I would put these things on Facebook. I would post them to the town websites to try to get the information out there to veterans because I think that everybody knows somebody, whether it's friends, friends or family. And when they hear about these things, I would start to get a lot of calls in the office saying, you know, I, I heard about this or I read about this. You have a very close ties with your local access station. So I thought also these videos could be either done there or I could put them to the, send them over to them, that they could post them on certain local cable access venues. And what that results in is, you know, people will listen to that information. They might not have a, a total understanding of what I'm talking about, but they'll at least be interested enough to call my office and say, can you expand on this? What that results in is more applications for compensation. It resulted in more veterans enrolling in the VA healthcare system, which can be very financially beneficial to them. And also, like you're, I, I try to collaborate with other departments and employees within the town. For instance, your shine coordinator over at the Council on Aging, most likely if somebody is qualifying for, say, mass health, and they're either a veteran or the surviving spouse of a veteran, they most likely qualify for Chapter one fifteen. Your visiting nurses who are going out into the community and helping people within their homes, I try to talk to them and work with them, you know, look for paraphernalia on the walls, like military photos or whatnot. You may find that that's a surviving spouse or a veteran within the home. I think that your Council on Aging, I believe, puts out a monthly flyer to a lot of the elderly community. I like to try to get involved with that because that's what I did in Hanover. I put a, a monthly news article in there. So a lot of this was just ways of pumping information specific to veterans into the community. And then that would result in getting more responses, more phone calls from the, from the community, either by the veteran or people who know the veteran, reaching out to me and trying to gather more information pertaining to veterans that most likely are in need of a benefit that they don't realize that they're entitled to.
Outstanding, Ben. Thank, thank you very much. That answered things incredibly well, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Great. Thank you for the questions.
Does anybody else have a question?
Peter does.
Oh, can't see Peter on, I didn't see you, Peter, on my screen. Please, Senator Blair.
Perfectly, all right. I, I jumped right on my fellow councilman's comments. I'm glad, I'm glad to have you here. Your resume is fantastic. I like your idea of getting information out there rather than to wait for somebody in dire straits to come in. So I'm sure that anything that we as a council can do to help you, I'm sure we're all here for you. And I know I speak for everybody on the council. We're very, very veteran-oriented. So thanks again. You need any help? My name's Peter Blair, by the way. I'm a lifelong resident in Attleboro, twenty-one years on the council. So if I can help you in any way whatsoever, give Virginia a call down in our office, and she can get in touch with me or give you my number so you can. And I'd be more than happy to help you with anything I can. Thank you.
No, I appreciate that. Obviously, everybody, all the members of the council understand that Veterans Day is fast approaching. I know that we want to do the best that we can for the city while staying safe and honoring Veterans Day. So any suggestions that you do have? This past Memorial Day in the town of Hanover, as I served as a VSO, you know, certainly we did flag replacement. I, I coordinated that with the American Legion, and we did a full flag replacement for all our veterans. We also did a, I put together a video presentation that went out on everything, including YouTube, which was just a celebration or, excuse me, not a celebration, I shouldn't say that, it's Memorial Day. A remembrance video that was very well received. So I know that certainly the expectation of this council, my expectation and the expectation of the city at large is that we do something to address Veterans Day. So any suggestions you have, I'm certainly open to them. And we, we can be creative, but I'm sure there's a lot, there's things we can do. So let me know what your ideas are, especially what your expectations are as, as council. And I'll, I'll put that into motion.
Thank you. Counselor Dawn, did I see you?
Yeah, I just wanted to say welcome. We met the other day in the council office. Yeah, I just wanted to say welcome. We met the other day in the council office and. I wish you luck and I'm sure you do well and I hope you're happy here.
I already am. I mean, I haven't had a, like I said, everybody I've dealt with, every, every member of the town, every, every citizen I've came into contact with. I know this is going to be a real great experience for me. I couldn't be more thrilled.
I, I'd like to add one thing. We've had a couple of conversations that I've really enjoyed. And one, one thing that you've basically made very clear to me is. The importance of having a yearly physical, you've told me at the VA. And even if you don't use the VA services, that, what you can tell us about.
Sure. As I mentioned before, my largest population in the town of Hanover, which may very well be the case here in Attleboro, are the baby boomers and they've always been our largest population of veterans. And right now they're just at the age of retirement. But you know, within a short period of time, they're going to start getting older and their, you know, and health issues are going to start really starting to impact them. So oftentimes what it came to baby boomers and older, the things that, that brought them or a loved one to my office was the out of pocket healthcare costs. Probably if not the, at least one of the number one concerns of our older population is healthcare costs. Even if they have Medicare and some sort of Medigap, they're still going to have some pretty big out of pocket costs. So I always encourage my veteran population that you do not have to give up any of your private care to be a VA healthcare patient. You only need to have an annual physical to be current within the VA healthcare system. And this can really pay off initially, it just kind of, if, if a veteran wants to kind of pick and choose. How they use their VA healthcare, maybe it might be something as simple as eyeglasses or say hearing aids or what have you. But what I find is that once something happens within the veteran's life that seriously increases their need for healthcare or their out of pocket healthcare costs. It's a great time for them to look at the VA because it can save them tremendous cost and aggravation. Most people don't realize how much healthcare is actually available to them, not just at the VA healthcare facilities, but also within their homes. You know, as, as councilmen, you have a segment of your elderly population who right now are in the greatest need in a number of different ways that it becomes increasingly difficult for them to get to doctor's appointments and get to their medications. And the VA has actually come up with ways to bring these healthcare needs to the veteran within their home. Whether it's home health aids, their prescriptions are sent in the mail already in their planners. Whether it's bringing nurses and nurse practitioners into the home to do, to do video connects with their doctors. There's a lot of things that the VA is doing to private healthcare is not. So I always encourage my veterans within the community to think about dual enrolling, keeping all your private healthcare, but start to get enrolled within the VA healthcare system. Because there's a lot of things available to them at very little cost that are either not available to them in the private sector or if they are, they're very costly. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, is there anyone else who would like to ask anything?
Counselor Waterman, I would.
Oh, yes, Councilor Jackson.
Thank you. Hi, Ben. I'm Kate Jackson.
Hi, how are you?
Very well, thank you. Thanks for joining us this evening and welcome to Attleboro. And I'm not surprised that you've had such a welcoming experience here in our nice city hall. You'll find that everybody who works here is, is quite lovely to meet and chat with and welcoming. And I'm not surprised that Stacy has worked out well for you because any department head who has ever met her has always said, oh, she's so smart and quick. I got to get her in my department and you got her. So you're quite lucky and if we can be of any help like.
Can't have her back.
Yeah. But welcome again.
Yeah, yeah, Stacy's just, you know, it's just, she has an incredible positive attitude about everything. It's, it's perfect for what you need in, in the veteran's office. So I couldn't be happier with her. And, and thank you for the town, excuse me, the city for giving, giving her to, giving her assistance to me. It's been a huge help for me.
With that, is there anyone else or the motion?
Can I make one quick comment, please, Ty?
Absolutely.
Ben, my name's, my name's Kathleen D. Simone. I want to thank you for your service to, to our country, for your service to our veterans and for the service that you're going to give to the city of Attleboro. And if there's anything I can do to assist you in that, I would be more than happy to. So good luck.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And you're welcome to stay on while, while I make the motion. So from the docket of October 6, 2020, I entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Ben Quell, 25 Wall Street, Middleborough, Massachusetts, to fill an unexpired term of the Director of Veteran Services. The term, thank you. The term to expire February 2022. I'll finish reading the motion. Mr. Quell was offered employment with the city of Attleboro on September 16, 2020, under a temporary 90-day appointment in accordance with section 3.3B of the, of the Attleboro Home Rule Charter. And we have our second. So we can vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. Vote passes three to nothing. And thank you, Ben, for joining us this evening.
Thank you. All right. See you in the morning.
Have a good dinner. We have one other item, also from the docket of October 20, 2020. I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to rescind the following vote from the September 8, 2020 meeting. The vote was, we had a roll call vote. It was 11 yays, zero nays to hold a public hearing on October 6, 2020 to amend ordinance section 218-18.1 to increase the number of members from nine to 15 for the council on human rights. This vote is no longer needed as the number of members for the council on human rights does not need to be increased at this time. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this matter? We're hearing none.
I have a comment.
Please.
Yeah, this was a little bit confusing because at first it was sent down that they wanted to increase the numbers. Now it was pulled back and it just, it just gets confusing when we get communications that come down and then we get a communication that says, no, I don't want to do that. And in, in the ordinance committee, I get a lot of communications with administration. So I see this a lot and it's just really challenging. When things get sent down to us, we have a public hearing, we kind of go through the whole process and then it's, no, 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 I don't want to do it now. So I just would please, and this isn't a reflection on you, Counselor Waterman, but we just need to be mindful and kind of process things in a, in a, in a system that's going to kind of make sense. Instead of sending something down and then pulling it back and it just gets a little bit tricky here.
I agree entirely. And I would say that when it was first sent down, I contacted the chair of the Council on Human Rights. And we talked about it and she did not feel it was necessary at that point. And that, that went back to the mayor and that's why it's coming back to us tonight. So is there any, any other discussion? Seeing none. All those, did I get a second?
Yes.
I did. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
I don't hear any. So it passes three to nothing. And with that, I would move to adjourn this evening. Thank you. At 7:38, all those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye. The council, the committee on will meet at the next appropriate time. Thank you.
I'd like to call the Public Works Committee to order at 7:37. I have four items to bring out of committee this evening. The first is from the docket of October 20, 2020. I entertain a motion to pay a distribution grade four license exam fee for the water department from fiscal year 2020 and transfer $102 from account 6100-578300, Water Enterprise Fund Reserve Fund for Transfer to account 6100-578020, Water Enterprise Fund Bills from Previous Years. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Anybody.
I actually have two of these. We do pay out to our employees when they do take a license exam, whether they pass or fail. Any comments, questions?
Is that a, a union?
Yes, it is. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. From the docket of October 20, 2020, I entertain a motion to pay a distribution grade three license exam fee for the water department from fiscal year 2020 and transfer $102 from account 6100-578300, Water Enterprise Fund Reserve Fund for Transfer to account 6100-578020, Water Enterprise, Water Enterprise Fund Bills from previous years. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Again, this is same as the motion before. Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. From the docket of October 20, 2020, I entertain a motion to pay a fiscal year 2020 invoice in the Franklin Street Water Main Capital Project Fund and appropriate $1,947 from account 6100-35900, Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings to fund number 335 Franklin Street Water Main Replacement and further authorize the payment of $3,338.04 prior year invoice to La Russa Corp.
Second.
Thank you very much. So this. This main was replaced and repaired and we just ran short in the fund. Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. From the docket of October 6, 2020, I respectfully submit a communication from Legal Secretary Allison Wood regarding a vehicle that the Department of Public Works would like to declare a surplus for trade in value. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to declare the following a surplus and available for disposition. The year is 1986. It's a Ford F650. The VIN is 1FDPK74N2GBA57459 and condition inoperable.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. And I just want to remind everybody again that I'm having a meeting at the water department in their maintenance facility building on October 24 at 9:00 AM and it is posted so we can take a look at their vehicles just like we did at DPW. Okay. With that, I would ask for an adjournment at 7:40.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 7:40. Thank you. Thank you.
Budget and Appropriations Committee is canceled for tonight, but I would like to call for a committee meeting at 6:30 on Tuesday next week.
Thursday.
Thursday.
It's Thursday.
Oh, you want it this Thursday?
I'm pretty sure.
Yes, you did and it's posted.
It is posted. Okay. And that's to, to hear from the city assessor regarding the tax split.
Yeah.
And what's that?
It is Thursday.
Thursday. Okay. And then zoning and land use is also canceled for tonight. But there's an email that went out to, through Virginia with Gary's proposal. So you guys should see that in your inboxes.
Okay. Thank you, Ty.
I'd like to call the Licenses Committee to order at 7:43. I have two motions. From the docket of October 20, 2020, I entertain a motion to approve the request for an amended class two license from Auto Maze of 885 Washington Street, Attleboro for 55 display spaces, 48 storage spaces, spaces and 10 customer parking spaces.
Second.
Yep.
So they, they just had a, a new lot plan that they submitted to Bill McDonough that was approved. So they're just increasing their cars that they're allowed. Anybody have any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. From the docket of October 20, 2020, I entertain a motion to approve the request for an amended class two license for Auto Maze 2 of 826 Washington Street for eight display spaces, 13 customer spaces and 38 storage spaces.
Second.
So again, this is just Auto Maze 2, same thing. They submitted a new plan to Bill that was approved and it's just an increase in the number of cars that they have on the lot. Anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And that's all I have this evening. So I'd like to call for an adjournment at 7:45.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned at 7:45. Thank you.
I'd like to call to order City Property and Claims at 7:45. We only have one motion this evening from the docket of October 20, 2020. The mayor respectfully submits a communication from Legal Secretary Allison Wood regarding a vehicle that the police department would like to declare as surplus. Therefore, the mayor hereby requests your honorable body entertain a motion to declare the following police department vehicle as surplus and available for disposition. Copies are in your packets. The year, oh, I'm reading the wrong one. Hang on. No, I'm not.
You got it.
Oh, that's incorrect. Yes, okay. Here, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I looked at it and I had printed one out from last week. So the year, make and model condition is 1993. It's a GMC 3500 Sierra Bucket Truck. It's in very poor condition. The VIN number is 1GDJC34K0PE557945 and it has 158,382 miles on it. And again, as I said earlier, it's in very poor condition.
Second.
I think, excuse me.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. As far as I'm concerned, it's pretty self-explanatory, but does anyone have any questions or concerns? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. That's the only motion we have this evening. So I would like to call for an adjournment at 7:47.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned at 7:47. Thank you.
Hi, I'd like to call ordinance election and legislative matters committee to order at 7:47. Committee members are myself, Counselor D. Simone and Vice President or Acting President Jackson. I'd like to bring one motion out this evening and then if we, there are some amendments I'm hearing. So we can possibly talk about it during full council. From the docket of July 21, 2020, I entertain a motion to approve the proposed amendments for ordinance changes by the Health Department for the following amendments to section 7-7, collection of solid waste. Section 7-7, collection of domestic solid waste.
Second.
Thank you. So we had the public hearing a while ago and I had sent, the Council Cobus had some amendments that I sent to the city solicitor and I'm hoping that those were forwarded to the full council. Did everybody receive those?
No.
Okay, so I can ask Virginia to send those again tomorrow. And I'm hoping to get this out of committee and then we can talk about it in full council, but Council Cobus.
If you could have the, so the solicitor said there's some changes, but she just sent the whole document again. So, so like there's no way to see what she changed without just sort of reading, I don't know how many pages this is.
I think it's five or six.
Yeah, five pages. And so if, if she could, or, or maybe I can, I can diff the text and, and actually point out the, the differences it said.
It's not highlighted or anything?
No.
Oh, that's odd.
But so I'll, I'll send something out to, through Virginia to everybody, sort of indicating what the solicitor is saying needs to change to those amendments. But in Diana, we had talked earlier about those, those amendments will bring them out on the, with the full council and with everybody here next week.
That makes sense. Counselor Dawn?
Can I ask?
Can I ask, so Councillor Cobus, you received it. Did, did anybody else receive it? Like what, I don't recall getting that from Virginia.
I, I think I received it. I'm pretty sure I have it. I didn't receive it.
I don't have it.
So, so just to clarify, Councillor Cobus had about, maybe about five to six amendments that he wanted the city solicitor to review before I brought it in front of everybody. And the city solicitor sent me an email with those changes. So she had reviewed it. And I did, so, so it was kind of like Councillor Cobus and I were in contact with the city solicitor. So I'm sorry if for some reason it got lost in translation, but I can certainly get it out to everybody. But that's why Councillor Cobus was included because he had sent the amendments to make sure that they were going to be okay for us to even discuss before, we didn't want to bring them forward if it was going to be an issue for some reason.
Oh, no, that's fine. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. So the other thing is, is that I have, I have a full packet of information that I'm going to bring to city hall tomorrow that actually has Councillor Cobus's and Cindy's response. But I'm going to try to get her to forward the email directly. So we'll either be in city hall or it should be in your email tomorrow. Do my committee members have any questions about this at all or any other comments or questions?
Nope. Thank you.
So just to clarify, this, this contract was actually, the mayor worked, the administration worked this contract out in, in February and then we had the budget meetings, which we approved. This is the last step, which is to get the ordinance to kind of be in line with that. And even the amendment, some of the amendments and the changes that we want to make are not in the contract, which could give us some flexibility. And that's what we're trying to look to do is to make this a little bit easier on the residents. Cause I know that this was something that was challenged. After the public hearing, a lot of individuals had questions about it. Councillor Cobus?
I know there, there was a lot of talk about the mayor potentially talking to waste management about changing the bulk item pickup process. Was there any progress with that? Did, was he able to, to get any traction with that?
The last time I spoke to him, he did, he did mention that there was, that this was still in talks. I haven't heard a final word yet though, and I could probably do that before next week as well. So I can have an update on that.
Thank you.
If I may, Councillor Holmes, I'll chime in for a minute. May I?
Of course, of course. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Councillor Cobus, I did, I was in a meeting recently with the mayor and he, he did update that with President Cooper and myself, that he was still in talks with waste management with regards to that. But one of the things they were discussing was possible amnesty weeks. And he's been in discussions with Jessica and also was involved in the discussion. So I'm sure at some point he's going to maybe come down and discuss it with us or send it something to us. But I know that they were talking about doing amnesty weeks where people could put up like four items during that week when you're, when it was your pickup day. And again, they're still discussing this and for nothing. So you didn't, you wouldn't even get charged a fee. And we do that three or four months, three or four times a year possibly. But they haven't, they haven't completed the talks on how exactly it's going to go down. But I know that's one of the things that they're discussing. But if that helps any, but I don't know about like the, the fee itself, I don't think is, I don't know how that's playing out.
Is there value in delaying this until we have an answer or?
Well, the Councillor Holmes can find out from the mayor where that's at at this point. Cause that was like two weeks ago. So I don't know how, how much further it's gotten in discussion.
Okay.
I can, I can certainly provide an update for next week, but I do think that, again, this ordinance is just kind of confirming what the contract already states. So I think that delaying it doesn't necessarily make sense. I'd rather us have the discussion and make the amendments and see what we can work, work together, work through basically.
In.
Councillor Cobus?
One other question. Are, are the residents expected to comply with these changes that, that, that we're proposing in the ordinance? Like for instance, is our small bulk items still being picked up, still being picked up now or, or not? Where, I know we're in this sort of limbo phase where the, the contract was signed, but we haven't approved the ordinance.
Right.
That's another good question. I, I am unaware of them still picking things up. I don't know if, what, if you are Diane or not, but I don't think they are still picking anything up. I haven't seen anybody get out of trucks. I mean, that, that's the whole point. Now they're just in the truck and it picks up the barrel and dumps it and that's it. That's a good question. We could ask him that if you wouldn't mind.
I certainly will. I believe that the contract is being honored though, even though this ordinance has not been changed. And I think that that's where it left a lot of residents very upset because they felt like the public hearing was kind of after the contract had already been signed. And unfortunately, this is just kind of the last step. And usually it's not the last step. It usually kind of goes together. But the way that the public hearing came out, people thought that they would be able to have a voice to kind of change this when it was really kind of already had occurred. But I can follow up with the administration on the questions that you asked and then we can kind of move, I can get everybody that email about the amendment changes and go from there. Or the proposed amendment changes. Councillor Waterman?
Yes, and I appreciate the direction you're going in. If, if you could find out where we stand on the $29 items, whether it's exactly like it was first proposed or where, whether it's being broken down into a couple of different groups. Anything around that issue would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you. Clarifying.
Sorry. Any other comments? No questions? Okay. I don't see any. So I will move to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that will go to the full council next week and that motion passes. That's all the business this evening and I'll call for an adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 7:56.
So, yes, that concludes the meeting for this evening. Thanks, everybody for being in attendance. We'll see you next week. Or we'll see you Thursday because Jay has a meeting Thursday. You'll want to come for that. That's tax classification.
6:30.
6:30, Thursday night on Zoom.
Thank you. Oh, Councillor, Vice President Jackson or Acting President Jackson and Councillor D. Simone. I have a bunch of minutes that I'm going to be bringing in. So if either of you can sign them, I'd appreciate it.
You're the best. Thank you.
Okay.
Night.
Good night.